Okay, well, thank you for your patience, everyone. I think I'll hold on until it looks like we're all here. Mr. City Attorney, is there any report out on our closed session?
Uh, no report out at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we'll go back to the regular order of business under the study session, with our first item being consideration of fine elimination at city libraries. I believe we had James Moore to address this.
Yes, here I am. So, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council members. I am going to present on, I'm going to present the information I've gathered and the analysis I've done on the possibility of eliminating fines here at San Mateo Public Library. I'm going to speak for a bit, and then about halfway through, I'm going to pull up a PowerPoint to illuminate some of the things that I, some of the, some of the topics that I covered, and then I'll finish it up. So without further ado, I will begin. So, where SMPL stands in relation to other library, public libraries on fines. Back in 2018, a wave of national public libraries began going fine-free with the goal of increasing equity and access and improving library relationships with the communities they just, they serve. Of the Bay Area libraries, Berkeley Public Library is the most like San Mateo in serving a similar-sized population. After eliminating fines in 2018, the Berkeley Public Library Director reported they saw a 19% increase in circulation. At BPL, 11,000 patrons were blocked from taking out items because of unpaid overdue fines. They reported that these patrons primarily came from Berkeley's three lowest-income ZIP codes. Elliot Warren, the then-acting director of Berkeley, said he would share with me the supporting statistical data at that time, but after several requests, unfortunately, the data was never delivered to. Of San Mateo Public Library's 73,161 library cardholders, 4,006 accounts, or about 5% of total cardholders, have blocked cards. This percentage is actually relatively small when compared to larger city and county systems, but comparable to our neighboring system of the San Mateo County Public Library. 8% of all of San Mateo County Public Library's 165 cardholders have their cards blocked due to fines. In lower-income communities such as East Palo Alto, the number can be as high as 19%. By comparison, in Contra Costa, even, they have 18% of their 650,000 cardholders having their cars blocked due to fines, prior to introducing fine-free policy. Also in Contra Costa, 43% of youth accounts owe their balance. So as you can see, some libraries have reported significant increases in circulation after eliminating fines for youth patrons. For example, after introducing the fine-free car, youth cards for children and teens, the San Mateo County Libraries reported a 27% increase in circulation in the first year and a 70% increase in registration for new library cards. In their 2018-19 annual report, they cited a 15% increase in circulation after going fine-free for all patrons. These are remarkable numbers. But so far, I have not seen any strong conclusive evidence that these remarkable increases are a direct result of eliminating fines. At best to me, the connection seems correlated. We were able to do some analysis here at San Mateo Public Library. On July 1, 2016, overdue fees on children's materials were permanently waived as a matter of policy. San Mateo's head of circulation and the head of technical services recently worked with the Pacific Libraries, Library Systems IT team, we're a part of the Pacific Library System, to analyze the impact of this change. They found that during the first several years of children's cards going fine-free, circulation of children's materials at San Mateo Public was not significantly changed either way. It has remained quite steady since. So now, I would like to share, um, share my screen and present some, um, some information using PowerPoint. So hopefully this will go smooth. And everyone see it?
Yes.
Okay, great. So let me move this up. It's down. So, this slideshow is meant, this slide, um, show is meant to show that, oops, that for well over a decade, um, well, first of all, this is the, this first slide is meant to show the numbers of people who have their accounts blocked, who have had their accounts blocked since 2010. Um, as you can see, the numbers were pretty low, and then somewhere around 2015, they started to jump, and in 2019, they jumped significantly so. I, there's no clear reason why, except to say, we now find ourselves with over 4,000, um, 4,033 patrons who have their accounts blocked. 338 patrons, or about 7%, have been blocked, um, have been blocked since 2000, that's wrong. Let me skip that. Inactive patron records are usually purged after seven years, but we do have right now 4,000, over 4,000 patrons with blocks, with blocked accounts. And, um, I'll, we'll get into some of the reasons why they're blocked. Of those 4,000 patrons with blocked accounts, the vast majority, 75% of them, are adult cards. About 25% of those blocked accounts are juvenile cards, or young adult cards, basically teen cards. This means that children are not disproportionately affected by the blocked cards. Most of the blocked accounts are from adults. As far as what those accounts are blocked for, um, in that time, of the, the 4,000 accounts that are blocked, the amount of money owed by them adds up to $240,000, almost $241,000. Um, the bulk of that is replacement fees. The replacement fees, um, are when someone loses an item and doesn't return it, or just decides not to return it. For example, we have had an issue with people who have borrowed the laptops and sometimes don't return them, even though we can disable them and they can't be used. Sometimes the constituents that we help the most with the laptops, um, are in situations where their lives are in disarray, and there are a number of factors that cause them not to bring the laptops back. And we, the laptops are funded by the foundation, we've talked about this, and we've decided it's just something we have to live with if we're going to serve that particular constituency. The second highest amount due, uh, owed for those with blocked accounts was $94,000, and that was for overdue items. Those are items that people brought back late, maybe quite late, but, um, they racked up so many fines that, um, they just decided that they, um, that we had to block their accounts, and then they decided, in turn, to just stop coming to the library and not, and not pay the fines. And of course, stop me at any time if you have a question. This screen highlights that since 2016 through 2019, the last full year of operation, 2016 was when fines on children's items was eliminated. There's been some fluctuation. For example, um, at Hillsdale, you can see, there was a significant drop in circulation of children's materials in 2017 and 18. But that is for reasons that we don't completely understand. It was about 3,000 less checked out, could be fewer families, could have been more people going to Maine, we don't know. But what we do know is that since fines were eliminated on children's items, there has not been a huge change in the number of items checked out. As you can see at Marina, the number of children's items actually went up. As you can see at Maine, the number of children items checked out actually went down slightly. So, the gist of it is, is that since eliminating fines on children's items, it has not really changed the number of items circulating, um, by, uh, members with children's cards. And this is just a infographic illustration. As you can see, it has stayed pretty steady. You know, a slight drop-off, um, at Hills, at, um, Maine, and a slight drop-off at, and a somewhat more significant drop-off at Hillsdale, but I do not think that was because children's fines were eliminated and a bunch of items went missing. I think it was just a trend. Um, and then lastly, I want to show what happened. Um, okay. So lastly, what I want to show is the trend of decreasing revenue from fines, which I'll get into in a bit more detail later. Long story short, you can see back in 2008 and 2009, the library collected, um, 104, over $140,000 in money on, from fines. The following year was close, and you can see that each year, the number, the amount has been decreasing. I'll get into this a little more later, but the reason, until finally, you can see, we only collected 27,000, um, in 2019 and 18, and that year was cut short by about three months, so we were on trend to collect about 50,000 that year. This is largely because, um, we are part of the Pacific Library System, and our member libraries with whom we share resources. They have steadily been taking steps to eliminate fines. For example, all the other Pacific Library System libraries have eliminated fines for seniors. San Mateo Public Library did not do that. So, when a person returns a book that they checked out at another library in Pacific Library System to San Mateo, and there is no fine on it, we don't collect any fines. So because our partner libraries have already been steadily eliminating, um, fines, the amount of revenue we've been collecting has been going down significantly for well over a decade. Um, and, um, so that is the trend, and it looks to continue. Now, we have contributed to that too, because we also, um, agreed with the other Pacific Library System libraries to do automatic renewal. Automatic renewal means, once you check out an item, you don't have to remember to renew it. If no one is waiting on it, the library will renew it for you up to five times. That has also meant a significant decrease in the amount of fine money being collected. And the point is to say, we don't want to do gotcha stuff, we don't want people to accumulate late fines because they forgot. So, when you check something out, no one's waiting, it'll be renewed up to five times for you automatically, and you won't draw any fines. All that has led to a decrease in the amount of fines being collected. Now I'm going to stop sharing this, the screen, or there any questions about any of these slides, you can ask me now, or you can wait till the end. Um, it's up to you.
Any questions?
Sure.
Anybody from the council, I have no questions.
Okay, so I'm going to stop sharing the screen, and I'm going to continue with the rest of my, um, presentation. So, the San Bruno, Menlo Park, and the South San Francisco Public Libraries, also our partners in the Pacific Library System, have all gone fine-free in the past several months. At this point, Daily City and San Mateo Public are the last PLS libraries still charging fines on late items. Out of nine libraries, there's just two of us left in our system. Daily City's director reports that they are actively working through the process of eliminating fines, but there has been no formal decision. If when DCPL, or Daily City Public Library eliminates fines, uh, San Mateo Public Library will be the sole outlier in the Pacific Library System still continuing this practice. As I stated earlier, because other PLS libraries have been actively reducing and eliminating fines for the past several years, as well as the fact, um, as well as the fact that we have all instituted automatic renewal, we are the only library that still charges fines to seniors, um, in the PLS, the amount of money being collected by SMPL has been shrinking significantly. With SMPLL soon to be the only PLS library charging fines, the amount being collected is trending towards eventually being less than $25,000 a year. Now, there was some question about how would we absorb the loss? Right now, the $50,000 that we last collected, um, in a full year on fines, represented less than .007% of our total budget. Still, $50,000 is money that we could use. The last discussion I had, um, with Finance Director Rich Lee, he shared that the majority of the library services and activities are free to the public. Thus, thus its cost is significantly supported by tax revenues. As such, with the current county-wide trend of eliminating fines, it seems impractical nor appropriate to trim the library's operating budget by the amount of revenues for, from fines. The review of the operating budget, which will take place over the next couple of months, um, in year one of the two-year budget cycle. The focus in a two-year cycle, the, I'm sorry, the review of the operating budget with finance staff is consistent with the city's practice of focusing on operating budget in year one. This review is coming up. It is through this review that we align the operating budget as we, as we close, as close as we can to the projected cost, which is based on information from PLS and historical door data. In short, if fines are eliminated, being that it represents such a small percent of our $8.2 million budget, it would be $50,000 out of an $8.2 million budget, this, I would work with the Finance Director, Rich Lee, in, in planning our two-year budget to, to, to see if we can adjust the library budget to cover operating costs, considering the relatively small amount of revenue relinquished by no longer charging fines. Now, my final thoughts on fines. Resource limitations prevented us from clearly showing through statistical analysis that, uh, that specific demographics are being hurt in San Mateo by fines. Unlike San Francisco Public Library, San Mateo Public Library does not have a dedicated data analytics team. Also unlike San Francisco, which has many ZIP codes clearly divided by race and class, San Mateo only has four ZIP codes, even far fewer ZIP codes than Berkeley. And because we only have four ZIP codes, each of those ZIP codes contain a diverse population of people at various socioeconomic levels. So we can't look at certain ZIP codes and say, ah, this is the poor neighborhood, and they're the ones with the most closed accounts, because the ZIP codes contain many different, um, kinds of people, um, and, um, families and community members. In my best argument for sustaining, uh, my best, in my view, the best argument for late fines has never been that they generate revenue, although for cash-strapped libraries, the money from fines certainly helps. But the point of having fines was that they acted as a small, they have acted as a small helpful nudge to get people to return library materials on time or reasonably on time. This was my long-held view up until very recent. At this point, I remain quite skeptical of some of the grander claims being made by advocates that fine elimination has led directly to major increases in circulation, or more people using the library, or closing specific equity and access gaps. But I do think that fine elimination reduce, significantly reduces some worry for many patrons, reduces staff-patron tension, and perhaps helps facilitate the better allocation of staff resources by preventing staff from chase, from, by preventing staff from spending dollars chasing pennies. They spend a lot of time trying to get, uh, collect fine money, and considering the amount that we actually collect, one has to think that their time could be better allocated. Overall, I found that the consensus from various articles, academic papers, white papers, conversations with library directors, and our own direct experience, um, with PLS's pandemic emergency steps to pause fine and fee collection during the pandemic, seems to show that suspending late fines has not led to any significant difference in the rate of return of library items at SMPL, nor has it spurred, spurred patrons to become suddenly chronically late-returning things later, later due, because they're not charged, because they're not being charged fines. At this point, it seems clear to me, the collection of late fines is simply becoming an obsolete practice at most public libraries in metropolitan areas across the US. I think that for the San Mateo Public Library to continue as the only library in the Pacific Library System charging fines for late items will become, will very soon become a difficult practice to defend with our patrons. It will be confusing to many patrons, and it will create considerable conflict for library staff to address, including myself, but especially frontline staff. After a couple of years of observation, in general, library-patron behavior during the pandemic when late fines have been suspended, seems to be remaining essentially the same as when there were late fines being charged. Those patrons who usually return materials in a timely manner have simply continued to do so. While those who were already prone to keeping materials too long, still receive a replacement bill that either prompts them to return the item, pay the replacement fee, or lose their borrowing privileges. From this perspective, fine elimination appears to, at the very least, do no harm, and it seems to be very well-received by library patrons and staff alike. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Moore. Before I ask other council members for their questions, I have one question for you. Uh, if we were to direct staff tonight to eliminate fines, to give us a policy, could we beat Daily City in eliminating fines?
Oh yeah. Yes, yes, they haven't, they haven't done it. Uh, we've been in contact, and I know that she has been talking about it, and I don't know if they've actually brought it before their council, but they haven't done it yet.
Perfect, thank you, James. I'll open it up to other council members for questions. Any questions? I think I'm seeing and hearing none, so we'll move to public comment on this item. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I have three hands raised, um, actually two now. The first to speak is Lisa Diaz Nash.
Good evening, Mayor Bania and council members. Thank you very much, and my name is Lisa Diaz Nash. I am a San Mateo Public Library Board of Trustees member, and I would like to support Head Librarian Moore's recommendation to eliminate library fines, but I'd also like to step back a moment and talk a little bit about why, from a real strategic perspective, we should eliminate fines. The library should be the heart of our community. As we're remote from each other, especially during a pandemic, we need ways to support and knit our community together. The library serves all of our community, but we especially serve those who cannot access our services otherwise. The library has a critical role, unlike no other, to play here. The library's purpose is to empower each member of our community to reach their full potential. The Board of Trustees has spent several months discussing this issue, debating it, and after all of that, we unanimously agreed that the potential of our library to empower each of our residents, especially during the restrictions of a pandemic, far outweighs the declining revenue represented by fines. We see there is an absolute opportunity to use the library as a place for all of us to come together, to empower all of our community members, and we should do everything to eliminate obstacles to reach that strategic objective. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rich Hedges.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Rich.
Good, thank you. Uh, I too support Director Moore's idea of eliminating fines. I had some concern when I first saw this, of whether people would be prompting returning, uh, items from the library, uh, so that others could have those promptly as well. Uh, he's relieved me of that fear, uh, talking about the replacement cost. That probably has a lot, a lot greater impact on someone than, than a notice of fines, uh, because it's, it'd be a lot greater cost. So I'm very good with this. He's assured me that, uh, from his comments tonight, that we won't have a problem with recirculation of materials. So we are great supporters of the library in my household. My wife spent 31 years as a professional librarian, and until the purse issues came up, was an on-call librarian at San Mateo. So we love our library, uh, and we think we're on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have no other hands raised.
Okay, good. Back to the council for any final questions or comments.
May I add one more thing, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
If anyone has a comment. Okay, so, um, I would like to just clarify, as Mr. Hedges just showed, uh, just mentioned, the elimination of fines is not the elimination of fees for losing items. If we eliminated fines, um, people would still get a notice, and as a matter of fact, we might send that notice a little bit sooner if someone is keeping something late, that basically says, you have something late, it's getting very late, if you don't return it soon, you'll be charged for it. Once they get that notice saying that they're going to be charged for it, they have a certain amount of time to return the item, and they still won't be charged if they bring it in within a week. If they keep the item, they will receive a fee, um, and that fee will prevent them from checking out other items until they handle it.
Thank you for clarifying, James.
You're welcome.
Any further comments or questions from the council? Erica, I think you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I just want to say real quickly that my, my comments echo very closely our public comments, um, uh, Ms. Diaz Nash's comments on, on the whole equity piece, but also, um, I had the exact same reaction that Rich Hedges had, and I think, uh, I think, James, you did a great job of alleviating those concerns, and I, I'm convinced that you put a lot of time and effort into this, and I appreciate your work on it, and so I definitely support your recommendation as well.
Thank you very much, and, you know, there's the, certain people on the staff who definitely did a lot of work gathering the statistics and doing the study for me, but stewardship of, um, public resources of the people of San Mateo is one of my highest priorities. We, um, we are not going to come up with a system that promotes people, um, being irresponsible and not bringing items back.
Thank you very much, James. Did anybody else offer direction to the librarian for this item?
Do you need a motion, or what do you need?
A motion if they're asking for direction.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to say, when our daughter was younger and we used to check out all the books, I used to always feel a tremendous amount of pressure, and so, oh my gosh, gotta get them back, gotta put them together, you know? I, I'm, I'm really glad that, that, that pressure will be off of a lot of folks. So I appreciate all the work that went into it, and if you need a motion, I'm ready to make a motion that we eliminate the fines.
Okay, other council members that feel the same way, that's all we need to know. If you feel the same way, then they will have their direction.
Agreed.
Agreed, okay.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Okay, it sounds like we're in agreement, so I think you have your direction. Thank you very much, James, for your presentation.
Thank you all, everyone. Thank you, James.
Okay, next item on tonight's agenda is consideration of support for single-payer healthcare. And we have the city manager with a presentation. Drew, you're on.
Drew, you're muted.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, I was frozen there for a second, um, and I'm trying to get my presentation on slideshow. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bania, members of the city council. I have a very brief, brief presentation for our study session tonight on single-payer healthcare. Uh, so by way of background, um, the concept of, uh, council adopting a resolution of support for single-payer healthcare was initially brought up at our November 15th regular meeting. Uh, there was majority support at that time to bring this back for discussion, so that's why we're here this evening. By definition, single-payer healthcare is where a single, uh, public or quasi-public agency organizes healthcare financing, but the delivery of care remains largely in the private sector. Um, single-payer healthcare has, uh, been commonly referred to as Medicare for All. Single payer healthcare has been commonly referred to as Medicare for All. So proponents of single payer healthcare cite a number of reasons why this is the appropriate action to take, and they note that it provides universal coverage for medically necessary services, so basically everyone is covered, which leads to a healthier population due to having access to preventive care, among other things, and it also decouples healthcare from your employment status. On the other hand, critics of single payer healthcare cite a handful of reasons why it shouldn't move forward, and that is the potential to need additional taxes to fund the program, and are the, and/or the potential for reduced government spending in other areas, and they also claim that it will lead to longer wait time to see specialists. So with that, I'm looking for, staff's looking for council direction tonight on whether it wants to adopt a resolution of support for single payer healthcare at a future meeting. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council members, any questions?
I have a question. I was thinking to kind of set the stage for this conversation, it might be helpful for the public to better understand how the, the escalating cost of healthcare actually impacts our own municipal government operations, and I wanted to throw out the question to either Teresa or Director Lee, who, who has the, the full picture of our, our finances, to help explain to the public how the, you know, even if we, in, in the last two years, have maintained flat wages for our essential workers and our city employees, that the actual costs of, of benefits and specifically healthcare continues to increase and eat away into our operating budget. And if you could put some numbers and some color on that to help, to help facilitate this conversation, I'd appreciate it.
Well, so I can, I can start off with, with, you know, basic answer is, for, for the current year, our, our healthcare premiums are up 5.3%. And I would say that's in line with kind of what we've seen in the past, I'd say, and Rich and Teresa can, can chime in, but I would say we, we generally see, you know, between, you know, four and seven to eight percent increase annually in, in our healthcare
That's right. As a part of our, we partner with an actuary to conduct a review of our retiree health costs and liabilities. One of the studies that they perform as a part of that is a look at what the expected rate increases are for healthcare costs for the next 10 to 15 years. In looking at the latest study, they anticipate for 2023 increases of about 7.25%, so a little bit elevated from where we are for the current year. Something else for the council, I guess additional information is that most of the city's bargaining units have a 90-10 split, so that's 90% of the premium is paid for by the city, and then there's cost sharing of 10%. For the Kaiser Family Plan, that would be, the total premium for 2022 is $2,228.36, so 90% of that would be just over $2,000. In terms of total costs, for the last fiscal year, so fiscal year 2021, the city paid $6.9 million in medical costs, and then another $700,000 in dental costs. So it's definitely a considerable part of the city's operating budget, and as those costs continue to escalate, that, to your point, does put a pinch on our ability to provide core services.
And it also put, sorry to just add in there, it also, my understanding is that it, it is shared costs for the organization and also our employees, and so it's burdened by everyone, and, and our, our city is also, you know, limited in terms of the ways that we can make up for these, these escalating costs through taxes and, you know, and, and fee recovery.
And one last thing is that we do benefit from having large economies of scale through CalPERS Health. CalPERS Health is the largest purchaser of healthcare in the United States, and they're able to command more competitive rates than you would if we worked a different path.
Thank you so much. Those are my questions. Is, are other people hearing feedback?
You were echoing, yeah.
I am, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, Rich? Thank you. Rich, I just want to ask you one time, though, you said that it's expected that in 2023 we would see what percentage of increase?
7.25% is the estimate.
Okay, thank you, which is an increase over what we've been seeing annually.
Correct.
Yeah, about 2% more. Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Other council members, questions? Joe, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So is, I have trouble with the term Medicare for All, because what's currently being proposed in California is not Medicare for All, and there's a significant difference there, is that, is that a reasonable characterization, Drew or Rich?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not fully versed on, on the specifics of what's being proposed in, in California versus what, what the general move is nationally, and I think it would largely be if, if council were to pass a resolution and wanted to distinguish between what was going on in California and what was, you know, what the push is nationally, you know, we can, we can certainly differentiate there and, and use different terminology.
Okay, I, I will say for myself that I'm not 100% versed in the legislation in California. I, I think that for states to try to tackle this piecemeal is a real challenge and a real burden. I do think that we all need to be working towards 100% access, 100% coverage, and elimination of disparities between different groups. I just think everyone should have, should, should be insured, everyone should have healthcare coverage, everyone should, should have access to local hospitals and doctors, but I, I hesitate anytime there's a plan that, that has a lot of details that I'm not aware of, so I guess in principle, I, I'm very committed to the idea of making sure that all of our residents are covered and have access, and that we're eliminating the disparities in health outcomes between different groups. Those three principles, I am on board with 100%. It is the more specific plans, the more specific programs and proposals at a state level that the devil's in the details, and I think it's challenging to support one over the other. I think that the benefits of having everyone covered, the benefits of giving everyone access, and the equity of eliminating disparities cannot be argued against. So we should all be working towards that, but I don't know that we as a, as a council, as a body, want to support one plan over another at this stage, but I, I would love a statement from this council that committed ourselves to universal coverage, universal access, and elimination of disparities. Those, those things really cannot be argued against.
Thank you very much, John. Before, well, did you have something you wanted to add, ammo and clarification?
Yeah, I, I think, I just wanted to add on to what Councilmember Bothell was saying, that the, I think the advantage of adopting a, a similar resolution to the one that was in the packet is that it doesn't specify any specific legislation, but it really is an articulation of those values of access and full coverage and, and, and confronting the inequities of healthcare head-on, and, and I think that those are indisputable, and I see our council getting behind those kinds of value statements. I would hope that we can get there, and I would also agree that we want to stop short of specifically endorsing as a council a, any legislation, and so the, the, the proposal, the proposed resolution, I think achieves that, and, and if there are other key words that I think might cause confusion, like the Medicare for All, I'm, I'm, you know, I think that we can, we can tweak those things.
So, thank you very much, comrades. I want to add that I read very carefully today this resolution that was passed in the city of South San Francisco calling for support for single payer healthcare, and nowhere in it does, there are two legislations actually out there, I'm not going to quote them right now, because we don't want them to be part of our conversation here, but what we are being asked is to support single payer healthcare, which is actually what Medicare is, but it, it goes, it just lists a lot of good reasons, it refers to the benefits of it, and it says that it would make it, in general, the belief is that it would be, it would bring better public health, public health outcomes across the board for people living within all of our jurisdictions. So I would advise everybody who gets a chance to take a look at the resolution from South City that was attached to the package, but if you haven't, that's kind of what it says, okay? It doesn't show any numbers of any particular legislation from any bodies, it doesn't call it Medicare for All, it simply supports basically the things that you mentioned.
So, if I could chime in, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't need any staff time on this, I don't need any analysis of any particular bill at a statewide level, to the extent that the current language that's being offered is a value statement of what we want to see to eliminate disparities for equity in our healthcare system, I have no problem making that kind of value statement, and I hope I didn't confuse us with my distinction from, from particular legislation at a state level. So those are my two thoughts. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other council members?
Comments after public comment.
Okay, well then we'll move on to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two hands raised, the first one is telephone number ending in 908. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Bennett Myers-M, I'm a resident here in San Mateo, I've been living here for five years, and I'm here tonight to advocate for Medicare for All, a single payer, universal healthcare system to serve us all who live in America. I strongly urge the council tonight to adopt the resolution language that has been previously submitted in the package that you all received, and I urge you to please treat this resolution as an urgent matter, so that you can vote on it and pass it at the regular meeting on January 18th, and I see the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amanda Minch.
Okay, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bonilla, city council members and members of the community. My name is Amanda Minch, and I'm a resident of San Mateo. I believe that it is vital that the city of San Mateo adopts the resolution language that's been discussed and included in the meeting packet, and it's treated as an urgent matter to be voted on in the January 18 regular meeting. It's simple and non-political, but single payer healthcare saves lives and money. Americans spend more on healthcare than any other industrialized nation, and yet we have some of the poorest outcomes. In California, 80% of the uninsured are minorities, and 85% are from working families. Not surprisingly, most of our uninsured are low-income. COVID has really thrown this in the stark relief, and in San Mateo specifically, about 40% of COVID-19 cases are from the Latino Hispanic community, even though they make up only about 24% of population. Adopting single payer healthcare would be a huge benefit to these families. It was mentioned that critics say the wait times may get longer, while that may be true for some elective surgeries, in countries like Canada that have single payer healthcare, everyone gets treatment, whereas in the U.S., people often have to ration care and treatment and not get it quite often. Besides bringing down healthcare, health costs for families, experts predict that single payer healthcare would save the nation more than $600 billion annually by slashing administrative waste of commercial insurance, including the paperwork and other time burdens that insurers impose on hospitals and doctors. We know that on a national level, there are many more gridlocks in place than there are in California. Other, other countries such as Canada got their start by being passed within a single province than that cascading to the rest of the country one by one. The resolution is not endorsing a specific bill, as was commented, and it is committing to universal care. It is endorsing the values of access and equity, which we believe in as San Mateo residents. So San Mateo has a chance to act, and I believe it is vital we move forward with this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is M.B.
Yes, hi, thank you. I forgot to change my, my picture. My name is Mary Bevan, and I own a home in San Mateo, and I would wish Happy New Year to all, and a healthy new year as well to everyone. And this, this new year, 2022, is going to be a critically important year for our democracy, as I'm sure you're aware, for which all of us need to step up and be an active part in protecting our democracy, but we also need to protect people's health as well, people's healthcare. Yesterday, I was walking by Trader Joe's, and I saw lines and lines of cars of people to get COVID tests at the Marriott parking lot. It was so sad. Test workers were, were out in the streets with signs, out of test kits, out, you know, try again tomorrow. I don't know if you guys saw it, but it's a disgrace, and it's, it's caused by our nonexistent healthcare system. We don't have a system. We don't have a system, we have a healthcare chaotic mess, not so much in San Mateo, thankfully, because of the wonderful community we all live in, but it's still a mess. But it's certainly a mess in California, and we know it is a mess in the country. It's time that we stand up, we're all going to have to take a major stand in leadership in saving, I, you can share my, I, I'm sharing my opinion regarding our democracy, but I feel strongly about the healthcare system. My life has been personally affected, my family, my students, my community, by a lack of healthcare, and I just want us to be leaders in San Mateo, and for the San Mateo City Council to step up and declare that San Mateo stands for single payer healthcare, that San Mateos, you know, care about San Mateo and California. The council should adopt the resolution language that was previously mailed, and I'm so glad that Mayor Bonilla referenced that, because I think it is a great example. This is an urgent matter, made even more urgently obvious because of the pandemic. It's so ludicrous, that's, that's a kind way of saying how terrible and tragic it has been. It's time we all bravely stand up and do the right thing for our community and our state, and ultimately for our country, because proudly, as a Californian, we know that California leads the way in positive change, and that the rest of the country looks to California for that change, and San Mateo should lead the way for California. Healthcare for All is long overdue, single payer is long overdue, and it's never more apparent than going into the third year of a pandemic and seeing how people have subsided. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ron Zucker.
Hi there, my name is Ron Zucker. I have lived in San Mateo since 1993, I also grew up here. I would like to speak in favor of the city council endorsing the idea of a Medicare for All plan for the state and for the nation, and adopting the resolution language that was emailed to them. I hope they can vote on it and pass it at the meeting on January 18th. I recently was, recently was able to begin using Medicare. I'm an independent sales representative, I paid for my own insurance, my last monthly premium was $1,084, that was for an HMO. I'm sure there are a lot of people in my position who don't have an employer to pay for their health plan, they can't afford premiums comparable to what mine were, it is for these people, among others, that I wish for a Medicare for All plan. I'm aware of a lot of pushback about what it will cost, and a lot of wondering about how we would pay for it. I'll point out that next year's military spending budget will reach $778 billion. That's for one year, and amounts to 15 billion more than the Pentagon actually requested. Multiply that by 10 years, then consider the amount it increases every year. What seems to have happened is that military contractors made contributions to the campaigns of many members of Congress. Those companies, including Lockheed Martin located down here in the South Bay, received far more in contracts than they spent on political campaigns. A lot of the contracts are for destructive weapons systems and nuclear weapons programs that we pray we never have to use. These companies promote the idea of jobs for defense, but the weapons industry is capital-intensive, while healthcare is much more labor-intensive, so it creates many more jobs for the same amount of money than does the military. But a lot of folks in Congress never seem to ask how we will pay for our military programs the way they ask how we would pay for a universal healthcare. the way they ask how we would pay for a universal healthcare system. It's surely true that a strong defense is a good idea in today's world, but the Congressional Budget Office recently outlined practical ways the military budget can be cut by one trillion dollars over the next ten years. With that kind of savings and additional savings on administrative healthcare security, healthcare, healthcare costs, I believe we are capable of taking care of our citizens' health needs. And that would actually be healthcare security and real national security. The San Mateo City Council cannot itself create a Medicare for All program, of course, for the country or the state, but it can join other localities in representing its people in a call for such a program. Representative Jackie Speer has weighed in. She co-sponsored H.R. nineteen seventy-six, this year's Medicare for All legislation now in the House. It would be a great thing for the city council to make a similar gesture and endorse the idea of Medicare for All. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Denton Murphy.
Hi, uh, thank you, Mayor Bonilla, the council for allowing me to comment on this. Uh, I'm a San Mateo County delegate to the State Democratic Party. And I'd just like to emphasize the last couple of comments, uh, specifically, uh, responding to, uh, Councilmember Gothols, uh, the reluctance to, to have a state lead this kind of system. I'd just like to point out, along with Amanda Minch earlier, uh, our neighbor to the north, Canada, their system started at the provincial level, at their state level. And that is how they got it. It took a state, in this case Saskatchewan, to lead the way. I believe California has historically done that for programs here in the U.S. And I'd like to see them take the lead here. I think that's entirely in keeping with their, our proud history as Californians. Uh, second, uh, to sort of emphasize what, uh, Mr. Zucker just said, I'm a Army veteran and I hate to break it, but the military is probably one of the most, uh, unusual organizations in the U.S. today. It's probably, dare I say, socialist in a lot of ways because it guarantees everybody. Whether you join the military, you pay nothing to go to the VA once you become a veteran and very little copay. And it's some, this system has been, uh, it's, it's been segregated from the wider U.S. citizen reef. And I don't understand, after, you know, it's high time for us to extend the benefits of what I've experienced for most of my adult life, thank uh, to the rest of the U.S. citizenry here. There's no reason why we can't do it. For the people that always point to cost, I'd like to say as well that we have front, at the, uh, federal level, we are now in the position with a fellow Californian running the Health and Human Services Department to be in position to get federal grants and aid that have not been granted to other systems here in the past in the, in the United States, which will make a huge difference towards making this an actual realization at the state level. Uh, again, I just urge the council to pass this resolution as a signal to our wider state and federal leaders of the need and the willingness for San Mateo County residents to push this system forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, Council, Jordan Grimes. I'm speaking both as a San Mateo resident and the political director of the Peninsula Young Democrats tonight. Um, just wanted to chime in, join the other speakers in support of the single payer resolution. Um, I, I will try and keep this short and sweet and just say that if we come away from the last two years with any single lesson, it should be the importance, um, really, really the necessity of a robust and efficient healthcare system that everyone has access to. Like so many things in life, the lack of access to both physical and mental healthcare does not just affect one lone individual, um, but it affects all of us. Um, and, and we have really seen that this year. Care of the individual protects us all, um, and makes us stronger as a community. So we're not, you know, asking for a heavy lift here. Um, what we're, what we're really just saying is, uh, and asking for is the city to further reiterate the values that we already hold and, and already espouse. Um, the, the goals and ideals outlined in the resolution are, are reasonable. Um, and I do hope that you'll pass this resolution at the next council meeting. Um, and as always, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no other hands raised.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So now I bring back to the city council for, uh, additional comments, yeah, additional questions and finally comments. And I think, uh, Councilmember Lee has her hand raised.
Many great points were already raised. Um, for me, with the pandemic being so present, um, I, I have a very clear takeaway that we are only as safe and healthy as our most vulnerable members of our community. And, um, when we talk about, you know, the enormity of the financial costs and all the unknowns, uh, I'm looking at my two kids in school and, um, and the toll that this is taking on our teachers who are having to serve as healthcare providers. Um, the twenty-eight school shootings and the mental health crisis that is, um, that is surging in this, um, in this country. Uh, just in twenty twenty-one, how many hundreds of lives lost? Uh, we are, what we are doing is so clearly not working and I believe in the leadership of California. Uh, I believe in the leadership of San Mateo. And, um, and I believe that this is the right thing for us to do as a community is to state our values. Um, and, and I believe that the resolution, as it is currently written, uh, very clearly reflects our values as Samitans, supporting, uh, universal healthcare for all. So, um, I strongly support this and I thank all of the advocates who came out to, um, to rally us to have this conversation.
Thank you. Other council members? Any hands raised here? I don't think I'm seeing any.
I have, I have my hands raised.
Yes, there you go. Thanks.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I will not be voting to submit this letter and it is not that I'm against a national healthcare reform or potential state-driven solutions, but, um, I will not be voting for it for two main reasons. Um, first, I, we represent Samitans at the local level and how, uh, Samitans feel about nationalizing healthcare or California-only medical, Medicare-for-all-only version. Uh, how they feel about it, I just don't know. Uh, last year as mayor, when I met with hundreds of residents virtually going neighborhood to neighborhood and, and experienced hours and hours of, of Q and A, um, not a single time did healthcare come up and I can't recall it ever coming up, honestly, in my last four years, uh, serving on council. And what issues residents did want us to focus on were things like fixing potholes, building more affordable housing, creating bicycle infrastructure, pedestrian safety, reducing crime and managing our growing pension liability. Uh, while the topics of healthcare reform, military spending, immigration reform, voting rights, fair trade, et cetera, are very important and, and very important to and affect the lives of, of many, if not all, Americans or Californians, they are well outside the jurisdiction of the San Mateo City Council. And I prefer letting Samitans decide for themselves who they want to vote for in national and state elections. Um, and the second reason, uh, the problem I have with this resolution is that we are being asked to take a position on just an idea or concept, or I guess value, it was brought up. And we're not being asked to take a position on a specific proposed law and, uh, a proposed state law or I guess national law, maybe if we're ever asked to take a position on that, would at least, uh, explain the details of how a Medicare for All would work or what it would cost and how it'd be paid for. And I don't know how much it would be, it would cost because, you know, staff didn't analyze this. This is not, not part of their, their job. And I have read from credible sources that it could cost upwards of four hundred billion dollars a year for a state solution. And I'm personally concerned how this would be paid for. And it's, uh, it would be the easiest thing to do is to say, yeah, you know, I'm in favor of healthcare, vote yes and move on to the public's business. But I don't feel right looking at only the benefits without closely examining the practicality or the potential costs and consequences side of the equation. And I don't feel right guessing on how Samitans feel about an issue so outside the purview of the city council. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, I think there've been good points made by, uh, by my colleagues. Um, we are not taking direct action on this. We're not, uh, asking staff to spend time on it. And at, at times, over the last ten years, I've seen this conversation by, by our council as a body regarding, are we staying in our lane? Are we going beyond what, what we should? Um, and, and I think there are times when, when we do stray from, from what is really important and what is central to what we do. Health, healthcare is just essential. Healthcare, like housing, uh, is just essential to, to who people are and, and a basic human right. And if we're not ensuring that our citizens, that our residents have a roof over their head and basic healthcare, it's, it's essential as, uh, breathing air and eating food. So, um, it's that important. And so making sure that we have universal access, universal coverage and eliminating disparities is, is fundamental. And we're not trying to solve it, but we are trying to be part of the solution and, and raising our hand and saying that we care about this issue and we want a solution to be found and that, uh, we as a, as a city, as a city council support the solutions, uh, and we're going to work in that direction. It, it couldn't be any more important and so there are, there are unique times when we have to, uh, speak up. This is one of those times.
Thank, thank you very much, uh, Councilmember Gothols. Uh, uh, I think I want to ask if, if I can clarify, now, does that mean you would support a resolution asking state or congressional legislators to take some sort of action to study and plot some course to deliver what you spoke about?
Yes, I, I'm comfortable with the language. I, um, the specifics are, are complicated. It's a complicated area. I understand that. It's heavily regulated. Um, but it doesn't mean that we don't work on it. It doesn't mean that we don't support the solutions that are out there. Um, it, it's too critical of, of, of a service to our residents.
Thank you for your clarification, Councilmember. Papen, Diane Papen, please go ahead.
So, uh, isn't it, you're comfortable with the resolution, um, as drafted? Is that what I'm hearing?
Or did you want to put the concepts and value statement in there?
Um, I'm okay if we, if we tweak the kind, the, the values a little more, uh, I, I don't have a, I don't have a problem working on the language of expressing our values in a way that all of us are, are comfortable. And if that requires a little bit more tweaking in order to count to four or five, then I'd be happy to engage in that process. I don't think that that requires any staff time. So, uh, I, I would, I would welcome that opportunity, but I don't think that it requires any staff time. Is that a clarification?
I think so. I think so. So, um, here's where I'm gonna, um, first of all, I welcome all the comments tonight and this is a very important issue. Um, and I certainly respect, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez's, um, you know, sort of hesitancy to weigh in. But I, I kinda, I do concur that we should be weighing in, um, even though this isn't legislation that we're necessarily going to pass and there is no legislation that we're really specifically chiming in on. So I want to be careful with, you know, certain phrases in, in what's been proposed. But I'm going to share with you a personal story to put kind of my perspective on this context, um, on this and, and just kind of, you know, put it in context for you and for me. So, you know, as many know, I had a brother that was sick as a child, was something no one had ever had. And he suffered and then some. And we had a lot of bills from UCSF to try to understand his condition and give him some relief. And one of the things that stands out for me during this time was the battle that my father was fighting on another front. And that was from the health insurance carrier who was trying to drop our coverage because of the exorbitant bills in my brother's case. So for me, I am equally as passionate about this idea of affordable and accessible healthcare. It's important to all of us and especially our most vulnerable. I appreciate doing a resolution that is a value statement of things like universal coverage and no disparities and, as I said, affordable and accessible healthcare for everyone. So that's kind of where I'm coming from on it. I have a personal story, story to share. It is in a serious context for me in a lot of ways. So, um, I'd like to see us put something together to just express that value statement. Um, and I'm not the only one in this world. There's a whole bunch out there that have had similar experiences.
Thank you very much, uh, Councilwoman Papen. So I think that leads it down to me. And, um, I want to say that I, I agree with the things that I've heard tonight and I especially, uh, am very thankful for having heard all the comments from the public on this very heartfelt and, uh, a far-reaching issue, which is of, I mean, just huge importance to all of the people of this country. But last, I mean, you know, least of all, the residents of San Mateo. And, and there were statistics presented by one of the public speakers regarding, for instance, Latino residents of San Mateo, I think twenty-something percent of the population, yet forty percent of those affected by COVID. Uh, and yet they're the least likely to be covered by healthcare, I think, in our population. So, um, I took the time to read over very carefully the, um, resolution that was passed in South San Francisco. And I think basically, I mean, to me, it fits what we're talking about. It is a value statement and it's acknowledging that the city of San Francisco is not going to be able to do this, but it's asking our state and federal legislators to please look at and do something about this, whatever that may be, right? Um, I, um, I know that this is probably, I mean, we have medical bankruptcies in this country. We have people who can least afford healthcare, um, who, because of that lack of healthcare, having worse health outcomes because they haven't been able to have healthcare maintenance. They haven't been able to have preventative, uh, or, you know, protective, uh, doctor's visits so that they won't become, uh, deathly ill with, uh, certain different types of afflictions. And I think that's, uh, really very sad in the best way, I think, to do this. And I appreciate the fact that it was mentioned that in Canada, it did start at state level. And in California, I mean, in the United States, lots of things have already started at a state level. And California being one of the leading states where major initiatives have come out of in the past. I do support, um, forming, uh, uh, basically, and I don't know how else we can express ourselves, except a resolution, what this resolution is proposing and it, it's being sent apparently from South San Francisco to their congressional and, uh, state, uh, representatives asking that they, um, basically enact emergency legislation to provide universal comprehensive healthcare with zero cost sharing for patients during this crisis and enthusiastically supports single payer healthcare and calls on our federal and state legislators to work toward its immediate enactment, assuring appropriate and efficient healthcare for all residents. I don't have any problem with that. I would support, uh, going forth. But it sounds like, I don't, I don't know, Councilmember Gothols, how we do this. If you want to see some language other than what's used here, this could be adapted for San Mateo's use. But if you want to see some language other than this, then I think we would have to have staff come back with some of the language or we would have to take this language and work on modifying it at the next meeting, which is, I believe, on January eighteenth. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, um, I, I, I would ask that it come back to the council and at that time, um, if council members can take a look and, and if there's anything, any part of the language that needs to be tweaked, we can, we can do it at that time. I, I recognize we ran out of time.
Yeah, we're out of time tonight. So, thank you very much for those comments, Joe. Um, because we need to move on. Uh, I think that, that gives council their direction. I just want to, uh, make one last statement here. I really hope that when this comes back on the eighteenth, we can act on it as an urgency matter because the time to move forward with this is like two years ago. So, uh, if not ten years ago, so, or more for that matter. But, um, those are my requests. Staff, do you have all the direction that you need for this?
Uh, yeah, I think, um, if, if it's, if it's okay with council, I think, um, to, in, in Yeah, I think if it's okay with council, I think to, in an effort to try to get this taken care of on the 18th, I can take the discussion tonight and try to tweak the language per the conversation so that council at least has a starting point of a resolution to look at. And we could finalize the language and adopt the resolution on the 18th.
Good. Thank you very much, Joe. Really appreciate that. And with that, we're going to move to the regular meeting of the city council, which started about seven minutes ago.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. We're in a meeting.
I just wanted to mention that it is 7:03 right now. And it's going to take me a few minutes to go live on the regular meeting, but please do go ahead and join. But we will be live in a few more minutes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And thank you, everybody else, for attending.
Record. Okay. Okay. Okay, so now.